This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Talk about a code of conduct for elected officials. It was the first brought forth as an idea, actually it's been brought forth several different times, but most recently it was brought forth last summer. We've had a couple of work sessions already and based upon the last work session that we've had, staff has put together a draft of basically the resolution of the number four council. Steve is going to walk you through it, hopefully in no more than about 10 or 15 minutes and then how long we are here is totally up to you guys. So a beautiful night awaits you and so we will just kind of bring you all up to speed with where we're at and what we've done with it and then it's up to you to tell us if you get any feedback or direction to want it and then we will proceed with bringing it back to you in the legislative process for final review. Steve, I'll turn it over to you.
Sounds great. Code of Ethics, I think this is something that, again, other than the newly electeds, we've talked about a few times. Do I have it quicker? This is going to be after. That's just one graphic. So in terms of the history of this, or at least the recent history of it, there's a city council resolution dating from this past June that directed staff to work on this issue for you. We drafted, our office drafted, kind of a working draft of an ethics code conduct policy and then presented that in August at an initial work session. We held that work session August 28th. Again, shared that working draft with you all, for those of you who were with us at that time. And in terms of, you know, really just some kind of quick hitting, single word type of points, you know, I think one, in terms of our drafting and your feedback, we tried to accomplish some of these points, you know, to make the policy aspirational, what we all collectively have hope and expect of our public officials locally, that it strives to outline a positive working relationship and make sure we stay in that kind of space that are amongst yourselves, that you do that, and then the policy also speaks to how you interact with others, either the staff or the media or those on our city boards and commissions, that, you know, we strive to continue to maintain basically, you know, good government, high ethical standards and good functioning local government. And then a lot of our time back in August, and again, might see some more feedback on, but I mean really, most of these upper ones, I would say, were pretty broadly accepted and adopted. I didn't have in my notes or in Terry's notes much feedback on those, but then in terms of basically what do we do with it if any of us are collectively, we as a group, fall short of those aspirational goals and things aren't quite as positive or the government isn't working locally as well as we told. So there remains a focus on self-enforcing or recognizing that this policy exists and we'll, you know, we'll again quickly walk through those provisions, but notions of here is the policy and newly elected or appointed officials acknowledging, accepting that policy and agreeing to apply it to the way they conduct themselves while in local office. And, you know, then also some concepts of, well, again, if it falls short in an individual circumstance, how to deal with that, so concepts of bringing in quickly, points of order, utilizing our parliamentary procedure to try to address that, but then also some reconciliation and trying to restore a relationship if something has happened that, you know, hasn't worked well and try to get back to that positive working relationship. And then finally, and I just put a question mark after it because I think it was definitely the one where there was the most concern about it, was whether there should be and if there should, what sort of mechanism should there be for some kind of self-applied, council-applied censure procedure against one of your fellow members? And then walking through it, you've got the code of conduct in front of you, so one, you have it to review, I think it was provided some time ago in a manager's update as well. But in terms of key provisions, section one is really that aspirational statement, sets the bar, sets it fairly high, you know, makes statements a broad policy of, again, what we aspire to here in Eau Claire for our local officials. It then goes into a series of sections in terms of specific conduct with others. So section two is elected officials' conduct with one another, so talks about use of formal titles, civility and decorum in our discussions and debates, and honoring the role of the chair. All concepts that are not new, they're really embedded in your policies already, a few of them are codified or in your city code of ordinances, most of the rest exist in different formats in your existing handbook, but puts them all in one place and hopefully shares it in a, again, aspirational and clear manner. Section three, elected officials' conduct with staff and, you know, in terms of broad points, treat all staff professionally, never publicly demean or personally attack individual employees, don't supersede administrative authority, do not solicit political support from staff. Those are all headings that were in the prior iteration that we went through in August and that remain here. Section four, conduct towards the public. Public meetings, being welcoming, treating, you know, our residents and the folks that come in to present their opinions and testimony with care and respect, fair and equitable treatment with time specifically for whoever's chairing the meeting, the president or anyone else, you know, asking for clarification, avoiding debate with those members, letting them, you know, come and present their testimony and, you know, trying, again, not to engage in debate at that point, but just to take the input, that is the concept. Following your parliamentary rules and procedures, which are entirely designed to make sure you have fair, effective meetings. And speaks a little bit about how to handle outside meetings and making sure that when you do speak that you're clear about roles in terms of individual opinion versus a city or council-wide position. Again, in this section and really in all until the last one, non-substantial changes from the previous version. Conduct with public agencies, again, fairly short in terms of section five, but references how you deal with outside agencies, again, that role issue of personal interest versus a city interest and, you know, making sure that you're representing the city's best interests if you are sitting on an outside board in your capacity as a city council member or public official. Conduct with board and commissions is handled in section six, speaks to keeping contact with those boards and commissions, attendance at meetings, and being respectful of diverse opinions with a broad concept of, you know, in some manner, like members of the public coming in, giving you feedback that you want your boards and commissions, these are, you know, volunteers that are trying to provide feedback and approve the city and making sure that we give them space to do that and provide you their feedback, at which point you can make policy decisions as you see fit with the information. Seven, just a little bit on interactions with the media, another concept handled in the handbook, but then handled briefly in this proposed code. So again, expressions of position and making sure there's clear distinction between the personnel and the city and similar to earlier sections regarding staff, that basically personnel-type discussions aren't had with the media, instead that's handled through the manager's office and over on the executive side. And then section eight is the enforcement provision, again, I think that's where most of the discussion focused last time we met. Implementation is handled in section eight A, that's the self-enforcing aspirational aspect of it, of making sure that we all recognize that there are these standards and that we agreed to live up to them on the front end and then, you know, the rest are sort of ways to handle it if that always, you know, doesn't happen. So in terms of how to correct it, should some things fall short, you've got points of order or privilege in terms of addressing it immediately, these are conducts that may happen within a meeting. There's also sub C, which deals with communication and reconciliation between members outside of a council meeting and encourages that type of interaction to try to repair a relationship. So again, recognizing, as a lot of the language in here does, that it's okay to disagree on policy, but as I've trained over the years at what we now are calling, you know, the council academy, that, you know, you've got to find a way to be, you know, tough on the issues and feel that you can state your positions and hold on to them with conviction, but do that in a way that it's still respectful, so it's not intimidating to another individual or it's not disrespectful to another individual or hopefully, you know, sort of that highest standard that it doesn't impair, you know, an ability at a personal level to respect each other and maybe even, you know, be friends with each other, recognizing that you're just coming at service to our community from different perspectives and that's just fine, in fact, that's what representative democracy is all about. But when you get down into it and you're actually debating those tough issues, it gets tougher. So the concept here is, you know, if, you know, if some of those relationships have been impaired, you know, here's a means to try to bring them back, including reference, although not requirement, of mediation, including a reference to tri-mediation, which is a service provided at this building, different organization but affiliated with the county and also helps the city at times, neighbors, use certain types of prosecutions and also small claims actions. D is that censure concept, so again, there was nothing like consensus on that and it's your policy, you can choose to have it or not, but it indicates that repeated or serious violations of the code of conduct can be noted by a written complaint, it creates a slightly higher bar, three members as opposed to the two that otherwise are required to put something on one of your agendas, and it sets a supermajority vote of two-thirds to actually pass that. We also have-
Steve, can you talk to what is a censure?
It's a public reprimand. You know, it's making public an issue that now has not been able to be resolved basically through earlier steps. So again, self-affirmation of saying, I'm supposed to live up to these standards as an elected official, presumably it's occurred in public meetings and so it would have been raised as points of order, and that hasn't stopped it. There was some attempt, you know, after several of those to try to repair the relationship through the reconciliation concept, that seems to have fallen short. So all those would be repeated or serious violations, it could come forward and counsel could then, you know, publicly say, you know, these sort of behaviors are something less than what we've all agreed to live up to. You know, in terms of other possible sanctions, although it kind of skips the end, it looks like actually it should be an F, sorry for the mislettering, there was one of the one I found in F, section two, but in terms of the other, the possible sanctions, you know, primarily it's a public reprimand of an elected official, but there is a statutory procedure that we reference there, but you can't really change that statutory procedure, but there is something that allows removal from office, and so there's a direct quote of what that requires, inefficiency, neglect of duty, official misconduct or malfeasance in office, and that's Wisconsin statute 17001. So fairly, fairly high bar and requires a further supermajority of three, four, so nine of 11 members. And then just prior to that, as a reference, again, same kind of statutory provisions that we've trained on or shared with you, you know, annually, board meetings are now at the academy, so in addition to our local code of conduct or potentially this policy and then our ordinances, there's also reference to bribery from public officers and employees, criminal law under 946-10, misconduct in public office, 946-12, private interest in public contracts, 946-13. Any suspected violations of those are prosecuted by the district attorney's office and obviously, you know, go even beyond anything that we could agree to or you all could adopt by resolution and thankfully not issues that we've had here but are important to train on, particularly the, you know, the first two are pretty tough to just sort of fall into, I mean, those are intentional crimes, but the private interest in a public contract is certainly one I always want to make sure people are aware of, we'll touch on it again later, but, you know, you can somewhat inadvertently violate that, so it's always important to steer clear of anything where you might have a personal financial interest in when it comes to city procurement, which is one of the reasons why we have a professional procurement office, our purchasing and contracting things are done professionally and then just brought to you for a legislative vote as opposed to going out individually negotiating those on your own where you could violate that criminal statute. So that's a quick rundown. Again, we're open to comments, questions, suggestions, and really this is just a touch base, it's what you all asked for from the August session, but otherwise, really the ultimate next step is that we can make any changes that collectively and, you know, clearly we hear, but otherwise we put it on an upcoming agenda and, you know, from there you're certainly free to legislatively amend it as you see fit.
Can we start with questions for Steve?
Yes, Steve. So last time we talked about this, and maybe I missed it today, but there was, there was some point in this implementation phase in the last page here where, or the enforcement, rather, where this city council took on like a quasi judicial kind of role, where we needed to hire a lawyer and all that, like where does that, where does that step come in, in this document that we have here?
So to the extent there's something like that, it's censured, so there is not a formal ethics board or committee, partially because of that type of campaign. So the censure which would be heard by council, if brought by a council member, is sort of that time to kind of bring a collective action of, you know, public reprimand against one of your own.
And that, that doesn't require hiring lawyers or it doesn't?
We would not prosecute it, again, it would be a motion that you would hand on, on your own.
It's basically just as it is written here, that's the extent of it.
Okay.
One thing that I had brought up in the last meeting, is the issue of superseding the city manager's powers and duties, I was concerned that that seemed like a one-way issue and I wanted to see some language in there about a reverse, did you consider that?
Well, there might be spots for that, but probably not in a code of conduct for elected officials, because the city manager isn't an elected official.
Has it colored?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it is-
Does it have a color? An employee per staff, I mean court-mandate per staff?
Right, we have a court-mandate.
There is a court-mandate. Court of conduct and then employee.
And how they treat elected officials, is that in there too? I think there should be, an option of this.
I haven't reviewed it, but if you could take a look.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what you're doing it?
Yeah. And then the other thing was outside of council meetings, committee or commission meetings or closed session meetings, are those all, would those all be wrapped up in this? Just want to double check.
Would it, would you give an example?
Well, a closed session.
So there's a way you share something outside of closed session, they shouldn't?
No, 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 no. If someone made a, just, you know, if someone-
Is it a phone call or something?
Yeah.
Or behaved negatively?
Yeah, in a closed session meeting.
Right.
Or on a phone call or in an email, other kind of communication. Say we're outside of a council meeting and I've seen this happen where a council member will come up and, you know, kind of get in someone's face and, you know, tap them on the shoulder or whatever, like is that, would that be covered by this?
Yes, I mean certainly the closed session, I mean that's one of your meetings and it's the-
I think it's on chapter page eight of the list.
Well, one question I have around that is in section two, I guess I don't, I didn't write down where it's in section two, but I would make a, maybe it's a question, comment and a suggestion, that I would, there's a couple sentences in there that it talks about when the negative behavior is not allowed, such as, quote, "when debating a contentious issue" or, quote, "disparaging comments in public meetings or during individual encounters", end quote. I think it should be, this type of behavior is never allowed while on, I wrote down some language, but basically, I'll look up the language, but that it's never allowed while conducting council business, whether formally or informally, it's never allowed, and that would cover council members to staff, citizens, just to kind of have some blankets, like this type of behavior, council says this is never allowable.
And I certainly can, again, happy to take your point or I can read through two again to see it. Usually you have that scope, you know, covered in the initial section.
Strikes.
Strikes, I mean it is, and it's broad, I mean, that sentence, the first paragraph, "Reporting the members of council shall maintain the utmost standards of personal integrity, truthfulness, honesty and fairness in carrying out their public duties." So it's not limited to meetings or in scope, I mean the other, usually when you go through, you start with the most broad and you go, you know, to kind of deal with specific instances, but that clearly it makes it apply to, you know, their public duties. It goes on, "avoid any improprieties in their role as public servants and comply with all applicable laws, never use their safe position or authority improperly of a person of need." The next, you know, the next paragraph is, I think, is equally broad, you know, the code's been created to ensure that officials have clear guidelines for carrying out their responsibilities and their relationships with each other, with city staff, with citizens of Eau Claire and with other private governmental entities, you know, without any, there's no cabining of that, you know, to, in this circumstance, I mean it just says their relationships, you know, while in that capacity.
I think, I think most of the time that makes sense and then in the rare and unfortunate situation where this type of behavior can present itself, often individuals aren't going back and saying, okay, yeah, you're right, section one says that, it's just kind of pervasive behavior, so I would recommend clarifying that, that this is, I'll give one example, section two B, one, two, three, four sentences down, so section B, four sentences down, it says, "Council members shall not be hostile, degrading or defamatory when debating a contentious issue." Could just have a period after the word "defamatory."
Period, yeah.
So there's a couple examples in there that are like that, that I think could just be-
Yeah, in the second paragraph of B, it says, "comments in public mediums," or it says, "or during individual encounters," but I wonder if we might just say, "don't make comments, you know, take off in the mediums or encounters."
Just put a period at the end of comments.
Yeah.
So it's a broad, right? Sorry, go ahead.
So I think, yeah, the first one I like, you know, and the other one, my, the balance point is you do have to make sure that there are things that are linked to their official capacity, you know, I've got, whether it's employees or, you know, for you all, elected officials, and I do have, you know, tends to be a, you know, not the most, you know, well-received thing to fight for the personal liberty and freedom to be a jack donkey, but it's, you know-
First amendment?
Yeah, it is a little first amendment, so you don't want to apply this, you know, beyond something that links back to your duty, so all I read then, I mean it's very inclusive, because it's public meetings or any individual encounters, you know, so the key is that it's in your official function.
How about in carrying out their public duties?
Yeah. Because if you're like, if you're at a ball game-
So it describes a council member instead of the action.
Yeah.
Maybe there's some council member swear in a ball game or something, it's really not in their official duty, but if they call you on the phone, it's where you're not, not okay.
So sometimes what we like to do, you know, if you're elected officials or lawyers, you like to really, you know, it's called, you know, belt and suspenders, you know, just make sure, and I get it, so what we probably do, the public meetings, individual encounters, or while otherwise carrying out their elected duties or something like that, you know, you just make sure you grab them.
Suspenders.
And, and it?
And the belt.
Both.
And the, probably the vest, the bungles.
Yeah. Weight bearing.
So it's, okay, so I've got two, two changes, I just want to make sure there's some consensus around the room on those, and the one is in B, the one, two, three, four down, "Council members shall not be hostile, degrading or defamatory," period, will be taking out, "when debating a contentious issue." And then on the last paragraph of page three, three down where the wording "encounter" is, we would then, we'd continue on to say, "or when otherwise carrying out their elected duties." Or something very close to that.
It's a work session, I mean, you're not trying to-
But something very close to that when we bring back the final document.
Public duties, that's, public duties is a phrase used in the first paragraph in section one.
Okay. So is there a consensus around both of those changes or something very close to that if, if it's down, okay. Other questions?
Are, section three A, this is a small thing, but for the staff by the titles, not everyone knows the titles, but I mean, is this or this, you know, instead of like transit development man or whatever, I mean, I was going to know exactly. We tried, we were trying to do that when I was chairing too, like have every single title and it just gets cumbersome, so I think that's best if I can find those.
Well, the agenda has something written, who's making the presentation, so if-
With a name but not the title.
Yeah, so it seems like you have to kind of crib that in there if you want us to use that, but it seems like this is-
Yeah, we could add that.
But some of them are really lengthy too.
Right.
So I would be fine with what, because it calls allegation, I mean, you don't know that-
The title or form or the form of the allegation?
Probably allegation, yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah, it's a good idea.
I mean, it hardly can be a policy without using the word "salutation."
All right, so consensus on that? Okay. Anything else?
What about with enforcement, so section eight? So it looks, this will only be reviewed for new council members? Perhaps to be helpful, right, I went by, we're doing a council academy that's reviewed yearly for every day, just to put under one of the yard, maybe even, you don't have to sign it, but just so it's not always named for you. So I thought it'd be day one, and then, and then we're, but again, it kind of keeps it, like, this is important. I don't think it's a bad idea to sign it, because-
Sign it, I-
But it does say, "And signing acknowledgement every seat," so, I mean, you know, we would want to capture at least one, and so not, not everybody will always make it to the academy, but to the extent that you would like to have, you know, a receipt of the policy signed every, you know, annual basis, you can certainly do that.
So the, it's just that you received it and know about it, but it's not that you're, by signing you're not saying, "I'm going to uphold it."
Just, but it does say that you read it and understand, and you're obliged to comply with its requirements.
That's the self-enforcement part.
That's the self-enforcement part.
An employee basis, which-
Last paragraph, the-
City manager Peters, we all know, you know, we tip, unless we're changing the policy, we don't have employees re-sign all the time, but-
And once you've signed it-
Quitting a concept that we would cover it in annual orientations or academies.
And I'd be fine with that, I just review.
Right, right, an annual review concept.
Yeah.
Which, it kind of fits with the policy, the things that you cover all the years.
Right. I mean, so we don't have this policy, so I haven't reviewed that, but the other, like, statutory ethics issues, I mean, ethics has been part of, you know, my orientation or academy presentation every year I've been here.
And you'll note that, so what we would do is we would put this into the council academy training for all that are there, but the last sentence isn't necessarily tied, because if for some reason somebody doesn't come to the academy, there's still a requirement that, you know, elected or appointed, you know, when you enter that office, you know, we would, we'd find you and sit you down and say, "Hey, welcome to the office, and, you know, here's, you know, you need to sign this." So, and receive a copy of it, so, but it would also then be reviewed, at least, it's reviewed every year, and an opportunity for questions and answers and feedback on it as part of the academy, so, you know, the academy is a relatively new concept, you know, this idea that, you know, we want to really immerse all members, particularly new members, but, or newer members, but certainly all members are welcome to, you know, an orientation of their service as a public house.
So members don't have to sign it, though? You could choose not to.
You would, you would, the first time?
First go around.
First go around.
No, but you could choose not to.
No.
Well, I guess you could, that's your freedom, you could, and then somebody should just document that you refuse to sign it.
It'd be in contravention of the policy right away, which would then be something that could be raised by a point of order, or-
Right.
Or a censure, so you are saying, but, I mean, there's, there's no ability staff has to do anything different, so-
Yeah, we can ask-
Council would have to enforce either through those mechanisms, or, I mean, I would advise that it's not a high enough bar, but should someone not sign it, and then continue to do other things that fall short, it could be the first, first strike towards neglect of duty or official misconduct. You'd have to have other actual actions.
Well, yeah, I feel like if someone doesn't sign, I mean, they're, they do just well in office, it doesn't matter, but they start doing repeated things, and they didn't sign, that's an extra, feels like an extra strike against that. Let's hope it never happens.
Yeah, or occasionally, I've had situations where someone's, they won't sign, or, I think it's signed under duress, you know, or something like that, so, yes.
I have a question on enforcement, it states in there, on enforcement, section eight?
Yep.
It states in there that three members can file a complaint with the city clerk, and I'm wondering, how does that reconcile with council being coached that you can't have more than two people connecting on issues? So how does that reconcile?
Collect the three signatures.
Have up to three.
So does that mean up to three council members can debate about issues?
Well, the three number has always been advice, because the law says, I mean, now we're moving into old meetings law, but you're presumed to be meeting for public purposes if you meet either with more than half, or then with a negative quorum, you know, enough to defeat something. So the reason that I've said even three can be a problem is, you know, I looked down at the last one, removal from office, nine of eleven, or, you know, zoning changes with protest petition. So you can get into that negative quorum situation very quickly. On this one, it wouldn't quite be enough to be a negative quorum, you'd have to have, you know, four to prevent that sort of action. And, you know, by basically the necessity of it of three, you'd have to get together.
Thank you for that, I can ask you any other questions on the other topic another time. Then, the other questions I had around the enforcement section are on penalties. Let's see. One, I guess a couple other ideas I thought about. Does council have the ability to remove somebody from a committee? Does council have the ability to remove somebody from chairing a meeting? And/or anything informal duties? Let's say council doesn't feel that they're representing them in a respectful manner, so they could say, you know, "For the next six months, you know, you won't be doing any public speaking events on behalf of the city," or something like that. Is that, I guess anything except for voting, like, council can't take that right away or representing their constituents, but as far as other informal duties, like, chairing a meeting, removing from a committee, are those other potential enforcement sticks?
So anything that stems from their elected status, absent removing them from office, can be done. So that certainly would not extend to voting, and as the president, it would also extend to chairing a meeting, which is a part of that responsibility, but if it's some sort of subcommittee or committee or something, you know, other than what's vested with elective status, it potentially could. So certainly the easiest one of those few examples you gave would be appointment to a committee. So any, you appoint, you just appointed last week, you know, you can, anything you have the ability to appoint to, you have the authority to remove from, so it hasn't been done, but it doesn't need to be put in here to be able to be done, I mean, if anyone is simply not attending committee meetings or somehow otherwise not effective, or like this code would set out, representing the position of the council's poll and in their representative capacity on their board of committees, it's your power to appoint that gives you the power to remove and re-appoint. But you could reference it here.
My suggestion would be to reference alternative or additional considerations, and I'll, I'll share a little bit more why. I think the proof of this document being successful will be once we're all gone, and to all strangers who don't have any background or history with anything contemporary, can use this and it works. So I think the more we can communicate with a future council, to say, "Here's some options for you, for you to have that civility and respect of the body," I think will be helpful. So that would be my suggestion, is to perhaps make a nod that council could explore other possibilities, such as such and such.
I just want to follow up on, follow up with, I think, what is important with this document is the sort of long-term implications, because people change, situations change, and it's always important to have ways to hold others accountable, but at the same time, I think the ambivalence that I have about this document is, I'm always aware that one of the things we need to do as a body is make sure that we protect minority voices, and so I want to, I don't know if there are other kinds of language or anything else that we can get in, but with the central process, I understand and believe in holding people accountable, but I do have a concern regarding, you know, freedom of speech issues. If somebody has a viewpoint that makes everybody else angry, right? And it, you know, that can be a really challenging situation, so I don't know, I don't know how you address that, if it is possible to, to go that, so.
It's one of the challenges of the procedure. And certainly one of the things we talked about last August, you know, among others, the more formalized versions, the challenges of those ethics boards, sort of what standard, and then, you know, legal representation that they may be entitled to, but simply that, that issue, even with this reduced kind of midpoint role of it, which is, you know, what I was hearing, or trying to define from you all, it still definitely has the potential, we try to minimize that by saying it takes three, of course, three is not a particularly high bar to at least put the issue on an agenda, you know darn well, if it's just thrown on the agenda, it's a major issue.
Might have the council immediately pick it up.
Yeah, I mean, it might fail, but it might not get the eight votes, but, but again, what else? It's hard to do anything else, because again, a good question, council member manual, just on the three, to create a little bit of a heightened bar, putting it on the agenda, but, you know, because of that very issue, you can't really say it takes eight to put it on, you'd be predesigning the issue by putting it on, so.
Well, in the section B, the set of, sorry, section two B, to your point, Amelia does say, clearly says that council members have a right, have a right to an individual opinion, which should be respected by other council members, and that's really clear language. And then it says you can't hostile, degrading, or defamatory, so I think that you hope that future councils can differentiate between when someone's being hostile versus when they're just expressing a viewpoint.
It's kind of like, you're supposed to-
And you have to hope, I mean, just like, you know, we do in contract drafting, or, you know, development agreement drafting, that you have, you have to, you have to at some point rely upon human decency and common sense and reasonable application, you know, so, right, those sort of words are in there, and could they be ignored or misused? Yeah, but, you know, hopefully they would, and, you know, hopefully three council members wouldn't choose to misuse them, and hopefully three council members or more wouldn't choose to misuse them after presumably being counseled by a city manager, the city attorney, and maybe others, that this might not be the best thing to do, but ultimately, couldn't they? Yeah. And then, you know, the other best institutional defense on that is if it's really then not well-founded, that the court of public opinion will then hear it out in an open session and say, "Well, this is all just so great, there was no basis for this, and it didn't rise to repeated serious offenses, and, you know, you all were foolish for bringing it forward."
Is this mandatory, that we have to follow the, this process of, make kind of sense? You have first made a radiation, actually, from a council member, and that group, and then you try mediation, if that doesn't work, then you just, is that kind of how it's supposed to, I mean, would any time-
It does build upon it, if there is not even free requirement of censure that you have used those other steps other than the language there, which says repeated serious violations of the code. Change that and say that earlier steps might be necessary, but of course there are times when things are so bad that maybe that is appropriate immediately, and it was, if not, you know, if not bribery, something verging on it, maybe the DA's office doesn't prosecute, but somebody refuses to acknowledge it, you know, you've got to take stuff to do something better, you know, again, imagine your other list of horribles that are kind of beyond the pale to sort of try to mediate through.
So we're combating that sort of stuff through language, then, so it's kind of just kind of say, like, you know, it's a recommendation of this document or this, this policy that these steps we take in first to all but extreme cases?
Well, it does not, I mean, you can change it, but what I'm saying is that it's repeated or serious, so you have, again, what I was trying to point out is that you have pros and cons there when you require that you basically move yourself through-
I'm not saying like you require, but just say, like, make that recommendation within the documents, and if there's no actual, or even calling off, if there's no actual requirement to go through the previous steps, but saying that it's the recommendation that those steps are approached first versus- Because of course, if someone's doing something that's not extreme, that needs to be, that needs to be responded.
Steve, is the censure vote of two-thirds, is that common for censure vote?
Yeah.
I have a question on section two B, on the very top of page four, that first sentence. This is probably a Steve question, parliamentary procedure. It's recommending to call a point of personal privilege, and then that challenges the other council member to justify or apologize for the language used. It's my understanding that, okay, so let's say that's an action, and I say, "Council member beaten, I call for quite a personal privilege, and I challenge you to justify or apologize for the language used." I'd need to choose one or the other, I can't say, "You pick, you pick," I have to say, "I challenge you to justify the language you used," or, "I, I challenge you to apologize to me." Versus saying, "You can, you're going to call on-"
No, it's the member responding that's either justify or apologize, so either basically withdraw, rescind, and apologize for it, or give some sort of explanation for it, that, you know, in essence, you know, probably the nicest even-
You are a jack-donkey.
Well, that is, that is a legal defense to, to live with.
And it's not the challenge to a duel.
And that wasn't what immediately came to my mind, too, is sort of, you know, right, that sort of history is, yeah, I mean-
But, but is it-
Well, the way that this stuff used to get resolved, and then you got to go to Hamilton, right? I mean, that's-
So if we have one shot to get this right, I guess my point is, isn't it most proper to have one thing that you're asking for, like, you don't, when we're voting on stuff, we don't say, "Do you want option A or B?" You move option A, and then people can vote it up or down, so hopefully it will never ever happen, right? And if it does, how can we set up somebody for success so they're not, so they can properly say the sentence they need to say?
Yeah, well, to me, it is trying to say the right thing, I can, I can kind of review it to see if I can say it more clearly, but I think what you're doing is you're, you're, you know, challenging might not be the right, but, you know, requesting, seeking that the other person either explain themselves or apologize, and so I think you-
And the person making the challenge picks which one?
No, 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 that's not how it works in polite society, right? I mean, you help the other person, I mean, because that's frankly in polite to the other person. I require that you apologize to, I don't know, please explain, either I have misunderstood, and help me understand, or perhaps you've misunderstood our rules, and you could just apologize. And so, you know, you're allowing that other person the opportunity to either help you understand and explain, or withdraw and apologize, but they're still getting free will and free choice, and an opportunity to respond, either with proper decorum explanation, or, oops, I didn't cross the line, I'm so sorry.
So I'm going to venture onto something I really know very little about, but I have heard you use a point of personal privilege- heard you use a point of personal privilege when someone's conversation goes off, and you have used this point of privilege, and I say these things, and then you have just stopped, and that person then needs to respond to the fact that you have called out this particular behavior. And it's never, I've never heard you say this or that. It's always been, either they change that motion, they stop the conversation, and if it, if it is inappropriate, I have heard apologies, but I, I think that we're being too attentive there, because I've heard you get the result that's described to you without having to ask for it.
I'm thinking about future bodies. So, and just thinking about, I guess the other part is to, our comments are supposed to be directed to the chair, perhaps. So, you know, if I do a point of where I say, well, I think this conversation is out of line, my comment is to the chair, and not necessarily to the other member. So then it's the chair's responsibility to say, please apologize, or please explain yourself.
Is point purpose same as point of order? Do you use them interchangeably? Is that...
They're closely aligned. They're, they're, they do kind of the same thing, but the personal privilege strikes me that it's most appropriate in these type of ethical issues because it is becoming out personally. The point of order concept, though, is very similar, like, so remember Kristoffson was indicating, so you're raising the point of order, you say, oh, I have a concern here, I think maybe one of our rules is, is being stretched as a point of breaking. And really, they're correctly used the same way. So you're raising that, but you have to hold open the opportunity, again, being polite and open-minded person, that you might be wrong. And so you raise the point of order, oh, I think we've got something going on here. And then person either explains and said, no, no, actually, we're doing it okay, that's still relevant, that's still on point, you know, or whatever, I'm still within my time limit, or something like that, if it's a point of order. Or the chair goes, no, I think the amendment is, you know, germane, is broadly relevant. So that's one option. Or the other is, oh, you're right, we are, we are a little bit too far, and so I will grant the point of order and, you know, ask the person to move on. Or, you know, on these ethics issues, yes, I grant, I went a little too far, I was getting too heated on this issue, I apologize, you know, and it moves on.
These are, this would be brought to the chair, correct? So it'd say, I point of personal privilege, chip president, well, I feel that council member X has, should justify or apologize.
Yeah, I made a note in there, and I'll try to craft it, but I, like, in such a chance, you know, seeks that the chair, or something like that, I'll put some sort of phrase in there to, because of all times, that's when you, you want to talk to the chair. I mean, again, for those of you that have gone through the training, one of the reasons that the parliamentary procedure says, direct your, your comments to the chair, it's amazing how that works. If you talk to someone who's sort of a third party, has the gavel, is trying to stay out of the debate, at least at that moment, it's really, it really brings the temperature down quite a bit, as opposed to eyeballing off and going, you're wrong, I'm right, you know, and all of a sudden, you know, and then it gets, it gets a lot more heated. So actually, just really physically refocusing the eyes and making the comment to the chair person helps all of us realize that we're, we're debating the issue, you know, we're not attacking the other individual.
And if the chair is the one that you want to point to privilege, that would be insane, just thinking about, then just ask them to please explain or apologize.
Well, you're not asking for apology from the chair, unless the chair just did it, but you're, you're seeking from the chair, that the chair asked the other member.
If the chair says something inappropriate, or then it would be forced.
So I'm hearing you say, David, that, that there does, that would want to add some refinement, that it clarifies how this works with the chair.
Right. And maybe just uses a different verb there than challenge, which itself is sort of heated vocabulary.
Well, this one might benefit, I don't know for sure what you just asked, but this one might benefit from a couple examples underneath.
Yeah, I think so. Could we, maybe?
So, you know, just a, just a very brief text of how that conversation might go.
I have more, but I can wait for other folks to show us.
I have one more.
I'd like to move to your. But I would like.
Oh, the mediation part. I was wondering, so will that be spelled out? Kind of what we were talking about a little deeper, what we discussed, thinking. So it says, mediate yourself. Say, if I were a new council member, not really knowing things, and I read this, like, what would be my next step to try mediation? Would I contact the city manager, and they, and would I like to do some mediation thing, or do I talk to the next, to the person I'm having trouble with? Of course, if I'm feeling beaten attack, that will be difficult.
But we're adults and elected officials, we all are, and that's one of the difficult things you gotta do.
And then what happens?
Try to work it out.
For mediation, though?
Yep.
If it only works if the other party agrees.
So then we call, and then we, I'm just like, how does this look like? So, so Andrew and I are having trouble, like, okay, let's try mediation, okay, sounds good. And I look up, I Google, try mediation, and then we pay for it, or does the city pay for it?
That's why we're off, that's why we're...
And then we set it up.
We should just test it.
That'd be fun. Are you sure there's no fee associated on the thing?
Um, it might be a modest one, right? It's, it's a, not profit offering, you know, do it or volunteer, but there is a paid administrative staff that might have...
Can, can council member approach the manager if they need some financial assistance? Through council.
Council, through council budget, that's an allowable expense.
I mean, that would be a big barrier, so you can't afford it. I can feel a conflict, looks rooming already.
I know.
So you can try it out. So if mediation is denied, then would, would that just jump right to censure after that, or would, it seems like a big leap? I mean, mediation has been denied in the past, and so that's fine, like, what, what would be the next step after that?
Right.
It arises to the level of repeated censure.
And hopefully someone is not, knowing that they read through this and signed it, you know, and the next step, if that is her, if it's censure, they might be more willing to try the mediation.
Or quickly just stop.
Okay. Richard?
I got some. In our August meeting, I appreciate the materials that were handed to us, and one of them included the committee code of conduct that all committee members follow. So my recommendation is that, if you could, please have somebody look at that and make sure that if something is in the committee code of conduct that is not in the council code of conduct, that council members at a minimum should be following the same standards as committee members, so that it's not like, well, you're a committee member, you have to do that, I don't. Like, we should have the same and higher standard for ourselves. And then I had also asked at that last meeting for the human resources director to share a copy of the employee handbook, specifically on the EEO and affirmative action statement and sexual and other unlawful harassment. And my request would be to have that language reviewed. I don't think it's appropriate to cut and paste that exact language, because some of it refers to employees, but to capture that sentiment that council will not be discriminating, harassing in any way, shape, or form, that that's not acceptable. We do have one employee, so I think it is appropriate to have council adopt the EEO and affirmative action principles. So again, I don't have exact language, other than try to model it after what the city has already adopted for employees.
Are you okay with that?
And then the two other things I have are, in, let's see, on page four, it says, honor the role of the chair in maintaining order under C. I guess, to me, it seemed that it would be valuable to have a nod that we have a council manager from the government, and the chair's responsibility is to enact the role, the will of the body. And so it's not necessarily about what the chair wants, it's about what the body wants. So just to have a little nuance in there that it really is about the body.
What is this?
On page four, on the very top, under section C, honor the role of the chair in maintaining order.
Okay. I was looking at the C number.
No, I apologize. So really, it's, it's the order of the body, it's not the order that the chair necessar, it's not necessarily that the chair wants, it's that the chair is there to maintain order that the body desires.
Good. There's some, you know, parliamentary underpinning. I have to review your exact language in your charter about the role, because I'm pretty sure that in the code it says that it's the president's responsibility to maintain order of the meeting. But it's also a truism that, you know, again, you can have a point of order, you know, challenge the decision of a chair on purely parliamentary issues, but, but you do also have different issues going on with, with your former government that's established by something much higher than this, your charter of the responsibilities of the president. That would be my only pause on that, but I can take a look.
And then the last item that I have is just thinking about the reality that this is hopefully such a rare, rare occasion that this should ever be used, that most of council service is challenging, rewarding, and should be positive and joyful. And so just wondering what council thinks about having kind of a opening sentence or a sentence or two that is trying to set that tone. So a sentence that I had worked up that I'm not married to, but something along the lines of, elected service can be challenging, rewarding, and positive work. The code of conduct is intended for the rare and unfortunate circumstances that may arise when working with each other, staff, members of the public and media. But just so that it's not like, oh, this is always gonna happen, or, you know, it's just like, this is so rare, and let's try to keep the spotlight on the challenging work and the joy of public service. And if we had an opening statement, something along that, then also close it, to something along those lines of, okay, now as we exit the stage, that, that's the tone that we want to set.
Can you read that again?
Uh, yeah. So, and again, I'm not suggesting that this is the sentence, but this is a sentiment. Elected service can be challenging, rewarding, and positive work. The code of conduct is intended for the rare and unfortunate circumstances that may arise, could, could just end there, that may arise, but on mine I have, when working with each other, staff, members of the public, and media.
I wonder if we could focus, instead of saying unfortunate, we could look at, how to make it positive. So it's like, code of conduct, and we kind of have that language in here, section one, is to help us all uphold the highest, you know, our best virtues among each other, instead of the focus of the man.
The phrasing sort of implies that it's a disciplinary document versus saying, like, here's, here's just a set of extra layer of performance that we're extracting from each other, and just professionalism. And in the unfortunate incident that something does arise, there are procedures that are in place to work through that, to remedy those issues.
That's what those first two paragraphs state.
I guess I don't, I don't read it the same way. I, even after reading this in the draft on Friday, and still today, I felt that there could just be a little bit more positive welcoming and positive closing message.
It is very positive.
Do you?
Well...
So I can take a look at other drafting items. The, yeah, I'm trying to find some, something else. My other suggestion on that would be to be careful about limiting. I mean, so earlier on in our discussion, we talked about making sure it had fairly broad application. So as soon as you say something about, you know, limiting its effect, it's sort of the rare unfortunate incident, you know, you have potential of, you know, maybe negating the earlier state of desire. But I certainly get the desire of saying, again, what the draft is intended to be aspirational, that was one of the points, and I think it does call to that, but using additional terms to make it clear that this is aspirational and, in essence, you know, recognizing that the call of elected is, is tough, tough work and, you know, so.
I wonder if I could contribute. Catherine, the very last sentence in the second paragraph seems to have the intention that you are, but is using different words. I wonder if you wanted to wordsmith that line instead of something that introduces, where it says this code has been created to ensure.
I think just that, like, when you read, because it, to me, it's a little like a performance management, which it is, it totally is, and to, I guess, call us to higher aspiration than, this shouldn't, I guess, I, but I, I see your point, Joel.
It's like the vibe versus the technicality.
I think that it's like a perception thing, too, and it's not objective, right? It, it, that's, that's, it's gonna be perceived differently by people. So we should be mindful of that. I think, I think it could be more positive. I think it's a good start here. But I also think that, you know, we should know that it's not gonna be the same for everybody, too.
So it's aspirational, but we can be more uplifting.
It's like one unicorn.
Remind me, some of those, although, the sixes, there was up, up with people.
So this would be the legal document, and you can have something really fun on the front page that wants you to open it up and go, feel really good about doing it.
How about, how about two council members on the city of Eau Claire River talking it out on a raft?
Yeah.
That was a wall.
Oh, no walls in Eau Claire.
You see the color version there?
All right.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write, Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.